Welcome, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with a prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and roll call. Dear Father, thank you for our freedom and the privilege of gathering here today. We pray for wisdom in our decision-making, oversee the safety of our village employees and volunteers. We thank you for those people who take pride in the community and get involved in to make it a better place. We pray for protection and community support of our military personnel and their families. Thank you for sending your only begotten son into the world. It is your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Hedley.
Here.
Barth.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Jones.
Thank you. You have in your packet the November 20 regular council meeting minutes. Anybody have any questions or corrections?
Should we approve the minutes?
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep. You have in the packet an approved bills list. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Mr. Beverly.
Very last page. Werler Inc., refuse stickers, refuse pickup. What in the world is that?
That's our first bill.
Huh?
It's our first bill.
They pay ahead of time. Do we pay ahead of time for the month, so to say?
We pay according to how it's billed here. She has the number of residents that she bills. She sends it to Werler and they produce a bill with the same number. I match it and pay it.
This is for what period of time?
December.
That's just December? See, when I saw that, I thought we bought Werler a pickup. I seriously did, and that was really upsetting to me. Okay, next one. Ohio Peace Officers Training, police MH Spanish TRN training, I guess. What's that for?
MH is Monica Herman.
Oh.
And she did Spanish training.
Okay. And that's a wonderful thing, but I thought, aren't you our Spanish guy?
Correct. I had six years, so I didn't go to any training, but I know that was scheduled before I was hired.
I see. Okay. Thank you very much for that. That is all I have, unless somebody else has something. Move, we pay the bills.
What's the water topper for 600? Anybody's here for that one? Does anybody know what that is?
First page.
First page.
E.J. Prescott.
I saw the bill. They're one of our vendors. I'm not sure what piece of equipment or what that was. I can find out, though.
Anybody want to second me? I do. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yep.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Jones.
Thank you. There are no minutes from any boards and commissions, but is there anyone here that has any reports from any boards and commissions, anyway? All right. So then we go on to council committee reports. The finance has minutes in the packet. Anybody want to say anything about them?
I reported that the last meeting. This was just the minutes.
All right. All righty. So we will go on to the administrator's report. That's in the packet.
I do have a comment on the bid for the restroom project. I don't know if that was the time to talk about it or not. It's on the back of the administrator's report. I know there are two bids, and one's local, one's not. There's not much of a difference, less than 2% difference between them. I would think, I know the architectural firm said that they would, they were recommending the company that was out of town, but for the cost difference, I think we should keep it local and hire the local company.
I would concur with you on that. We have talked about that, and I talked to you about it today, and I think we should hire Borderline.
Do we need legislation brought, Troy, to authorize that?
Yeah, I mean, you need to authorize a contract with them.
That's the difference.
Yeah. I mean, not, I mean, authorize the contract. We just have to decide that's who we're awarding the contract to, and it's just like anything else. I mean, they have to notify the two parties, you know, that they were or weren't, because it's, I mean, the standard is lowest and best bid, and we got a right to take into consideration the locale. As a matter of fact, it sounds like Jim spoke to him, and it's not the other contractor, not, it's something that's going to be offensive to him, it doesn't sound like.
So you need a motion, or you just put together some legislation?
Well, just put together some legislation and bring back, to enter into a contract with Borderline Construction. I assume the architects, like always, will be putting together their kind of standard contracts we can look at.
They will.
Okay.
Whatever the council decides. The way we're building this. And no reflection on you, Jim, because I realized that this was going on long before you got here. But we're putting a sub base footer in, and we're running block up out of the ground. Block does not like being buried.
Jim mentioned that. You can tweak that and put a change order in according to Jim, so.
And I also heard we're doing a standard concrete block. I thought, in different times I spoke with you, we had talked to textured block, which is like three cents more than a standard block.
Split face, yeah.
Another change order.
I spoke with Borderline, and you might want to double check with them, but I think the reason why they are a little higher is because they had included split face block on the building. That's why I want to make sure we're doing apple for apples, but either way, if that's the cost difference between the two, I'd rather go with a local company. There's going to be all local plumbers, local electricians, local contractors, construction-wise.
Yeah, with either award, it would have been all local.
True.
I agree with you, too, about not having the block down below the sub base.
And we've got bolt-to-the-wall potties, and in a situation where it's open to the public like that, and the kid can get in there and jump up and down on them, I think they should be pedestal potties. Bolted to the wall, I mean, 200 pounds can jump twice on there and it's off the wall.
Jim mentioned that before you come in. He wanted pedestal base potties.
Why the hell don't know anybody talk to me? That way...
It was just a conversation before the council meeting started.
Before you walked in. I still like the wall mount. It's easier to clean. You can mop right underneath them.
Yeah.
If you're standing on a wall mount, or a 300-pound person jumping up and down on either toilet, you're going to, it's porcelain, it's going to break. Cleaning purposes-wise, it's a lot easier to clean underneath. I mean, every commercial building you go into, 90% of them all have wall-mounted toilets on them.
But when we first started to engineer this thing, and I was, I had a lot closer grip on the thing, and speaking with Diane, we talked about this one day, is we needed compartments, lockable compartments, so that you open that up, whoever custodial service is, open that up, and there's a hose in there so you could spray that thing down. Floor drains, I don't know if any of this has been incorporated into this thing or not. Paul, that's been discussed, adding an extra drain just for that reason? For floor drains in each section.
They're supposed to have drains in the first place.
Correct. Yes, there is. As far as the wall mounts go, I've discussed that as well with the architect and with Borderline, and we can put in a faux pedestal just for support, so you can still get behind it for the cleaning, because the mayor had mentioned that as well. So we can still have the cleaning aspect, where you can get a mop or something back in there, but then you've got the support, but the plumbing will still go into the wall. So. Yeah, well, and that's, a lot of these new truck stops that are being built, they're that way. They're bolted to the wall, but they also sit on a pedestal. Right, right. I think we should insist on that, and that's just another change order, too, so.
There's still black walls inside, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm excited to get this restroom project going, I'll say that. Are they going to put a 60-day deadline in the contract, or?
60 days to complete?
Uh-huh.
When are you going to start it?
Well, I, not till we get our legislation passed, that's for sure.
Right. But I mean, that would be asking a lot of somebody to do all that block work in winter and freezing winter.
Okay. Because the other company said they could get it done. So I didn't know.
Well, anybody can, but if you've ever had brickwork done or blockwork done in the winter, where they add calcium or nano freezer to the mortar mix, you get a white frosty film that comes off of it for two, three years. You have to keep pressure washing off, and that makes it so the paint will not adhere to it if you're painting your block.
So what would be a reasonable completion date?
Well, I think... Before spring. The start date. The start date needs to be, you know, like, first of March, and you've got to have it done by the end of April, or something like that. I'm just throwing that out there now. So it can be used, get it open before.
It's still 60 days, it just depends on when it starts.
Yes, yes. Otherwise, you're going to have to, you know, erect somewhat of a tent and keep it heated, and...
I just don't want it drawn up.
Yeah, we don't want it six months, but we don't want...
Like, that would be when the park opens.
Sure, definitely have it completely ready to go.
When's park open?
I mean, before the park. I mean, the kids will start going there as soon as the weather gets nice in the spring.
And Gary Bowden will be down there, though, too.
When does this park open?
Usually May, April.
No, before that.
March.
And March.
First time it starts to get warm.
Oh, yeah. Spring fever. The kids are out playing, or down there running around in the park, so.
Yeah, by the March, April. We have all games. Gary Bowden will start about mid, I think, middle or end of February they start.
Okay, well, that, Jim can figure that out.
When it's done right, that's for sure.
Yep, that's right. Great. Glad to get that going. Do you have anything else in your report, Jim? Does anybody have any questions for Jim?
I liked your report.
Yes. Thank you. Just, a couple things just came up. We finished the year at just over 1,000 tons of trash. I know that had been shared with you before, what we did through the year. Leaf pickup loads are at 112 loads thus far this year, and we started today on the Clearview Stormwater Discharge. Our contractor, Mr. Savage, really got going on it, and we got a late start. Had to stage everything, shot some elevations, and they're nearly halfway done already, so.
They should have been here a couple days, probably.
Yeah. Maybe be done tomorrow, at the earliest, early...
He moves quick.
Early Wednesday.
He's good.
So, and our guys were out there all day, obviously assisting, so.
Great.
I had a real quick question, if you're not, if you're not. Choice one, we were going to check with air out there on Industrial Drive. Did you ever find out, because I asked you about it when we were talking on the phone, got any farther?
I sent them an email a while back, and I haven't heard back from them yet.
Really?
Yeah. But I'll just, I'll keep bird dogging them.
Go ahead.
Want to remind everyone that this week's the first trash pickup for Werler.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. So just make sure everyone's aware, first trash pickup's Wednesday, so don't be sending trash out.
And I think I finally get to put out my recycling tub that's been full for like three weeks.
So is mine.
Yeah.
But they're not taking recycling, are they?
Yep, my area, my area, the yellow area, is getting recycling and bulk items tomorrow. Or, I mean, Wednesday, I'm sorry.
Green is...
Green's the 20th, and it's for bulk items.
Right.
And recycling's tomorrow, and I don't remember the other two.
Thanks, Stu. Get that recycling picked up. We did get a recycling schedule from the Defiance Solid Waste Management, and I didn't think to bring it and announce it, but I know they were going to have the schedule in the Tribune, and it's, you can definitely pick it up for anybody that's interested from the utility office, and I would imagine she has details on the website also, for anybody that knows. They're going to come, I think it said January and February at County Solid Waste, over at Grace United Methodist Church parking lot, till we get things going up and going here well in the village, so I was happy about that. Anything else for Jim? All righty, thank you. So we will go on to the solicitor's report.
Just a couple of things. I think I wasn't at the last meeting, but those on vacation, but the CRA legislation, that's been done for a long time. Jerry did take it to the school, I understand, explained everything to him, what we were looking at. They wanted, like, between one meeting to basically go through it all and everything, and then the intention is that they'll pass their resolution at their next meeting, which off the top of my head, I'm not sure when.
I think it's next Monday.
It's next Monday. And so then, at our next meeting, presuming that they give us the blessing, we should be able to do the first reading on our CRA, the actual legislation, to enact it.
And I asked Cheryl to get that to each of you in advance, so you can read it for yourself before.
And I previously sent that to you, right? I did not? I thought that, especially when I was on vacation, that's the one call that I made was to my office, and I thought I emailed it to you. I'll give it to you first thing. Well, you know what? I'll give you that, and you make copies. Unless you want me to email it to you, that way you can...
I'll have a copy.
Okay. All right, I'll do that. So that's that. The income tax legislation's not the big deal, it's getting the contract finalized, which I think is about there, and so what I would propose is most likely is, I'll try and get that circulated well before the next meeting, and then at the next meeting, we can do a first reading, and potentially, if there's no questions, pass it as an emergency to get it effective before the beginning of the year. And then the Verizon Tower offer, Cheryl had given me the file to look at, and she brought this up before. We've received from a couple of different, a couple of different times where they had made offers basically to pay us a lump sum in lieu of our month, monthly payments, right? In lieu of our monthly payments. I have looked over the majority of that, and I will tell you, while it looks good on its face financially, because you look at it and you say, well, we get X amount a month for the next 20 years, 15, I think it's already been five or something, and then it automatically renews for a couple of periods of time, and if you add the numbers up, it's not, it's not that bad, and we're getting all the money upfront now. The difference really in it, which they don't really highlight in all their promotional materials about all the advantages, is right now they only have a lease that at some point, unless we renew it, will definitely end, where if you give them a permanent easement, it's theirs forever. And so that's what they're trying to do, is they're trying to put $150,000 in your face in order to acquire a permanent interest in the, in the real estate out there, so I could try and break down the numbers a little bit more. My personal preference, not that I would have a vote on it, is that we'd rather maintain the flexibility of owning the land and being able to do what we want to do, even if it's nobody in the room sitting here is dealing with it 40 years from now, or whatever, so that's, that's where that stands. I do have the file, and I've gone through it, and I can break down the numbers and explain a little bit more, but that's, that's why they make those offers, they're trying to...
Does anyone feel a need for Troy to do that? Are you satisfied with the way?
I'm satisfied.
Even like it is.
That would be my call.
Good. I just hate to see him waste his time.
Yeah.
So Troy, on the Sherwood income tax legislation, has Sherwood agreed to the contract?
They have, we're in the process of putting it together, but they'll have to pass legislation, too.
Okay.
So I tried calling Steve Hubbard, solicitor today, and I couldn't catch up with him between our schedules or whatever, so see when they're, but they have to, obviously, because it's a contract, so they got to authorize it, we got to authorize it, so we're trying to hurry that along, obviously, to get it in before the end of the year.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions for Troy about anything? All right. Thank you. We'll go with the departmental report, and I see that for the Police Department, we have a patrolman here. You have a report for us?
Evening. I'm filling in for Chief Stickney. He wanted to let you know that he's busy, he's doing a prisoner transport, but at this time, there's nothing that the Police Department has to report, unless you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you for coming.
All right, thank you.
We'll go to the Fire Chief.
I have nothing to report on the fire side. EMS side, like to thank everybody that contributed to the Christmas for Kids, around the day picking barrels up, I know that. And we had a run right before this, and I didn't get my stuff together. I'm not sure my distribution of stuff is.
Okay. So you picked up the barrels, but if there are some individuals like myself that have not got their things in the barrel, I can just take it to the Fire Department?
Yep.
All right. There might be other people like me.
I'm sure.
Does anybody have any questions for Scott?
Thanks for doing that.
Thanks for coming. Yep, thank you very much. Okay, and did you have, you gave the EMS report also.
Yeah, they have it.
All right.
That was with the EMS.
And I see you have two people starting classes for the EMS.
Two in class, yep.
That's great. Did the class start yet?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
They're about two months into that thing.
Great. All right, and no Park Director, it looks like, or Park Representative? All right. We will go on to the Fiscal Officers' Report.
Mine is short and sweet tonight. I have the Statement of Cash, starting December 1st, the Income Tax Report, and the Utility Report. They're collections for the month of November. That's it.
Any questions for Cheryl regarding any of those reports? I did not even know that I have all that stuff under my report. I wrote notes down below. Christmas in the Village, that is going to be December 9, and the parade is going to start at 5:30, lineups at 4:30, and it's going to line up right back here, behind Hicksville Bank in that parking lot, and the parade will go down Edgerton Street to Maine, Maine to High, High to the Land Office, and Santa Claus is going to be on the deck at the Land Office to see children. So that would be a great thing to go to, and then we have the Cruise Through going on down here every night during the week, but on the weekends, they have such events as visit with Santa, carriage rides, entertainment, mini-village, crafters, food, festival of trees, and a smores shack. And then on Sunday, December 10, there's going to be fireworks, massive fireworks. So you can just drive through Monday through Friday and see the lights, they're absolutely beautiful. Mike and I worked down there last night, there are people come from Detroit, I mean, all over the place to see this display. I mean, not just Ohio, Indiana, Michigan, they came from, like, Tennessee. They just drive around and check out lights, so it's pretty impressive. So if you get a chance to go through, or if you know someone that can't drive or get out, offer to take them through, because it's absolutely beautiful.
Can I add something to that, Mayor?
Yes.
The Christmas Cruise Through Board is dealing with the Fair Board, because they take 75% of what's made, and only give Christmas Cruise Through people, and everybody, the 25%. They have a meeting January 9, and Denise has added all of her Facebook page, or Cruise Through page, that anybody that would want to come down and be at that meeting and help sway the Fair Board into a better deal, so that this can continue, because at the point that they're at, I mean, it's all the people that are volunteering, everybody's a volunteer, and everybody's spending their own money, while the Fair Board takes 40-some thousand dollars they walked away with. So I would encourage anybody to attend that meeting. It's in Brunnersburg at the EMA Building, January 9, but the time I'm not positive on.
I wrote it on my calendar at my desk, but I don't have it right here.
They have a three-year contract, right?
Right.
So it's now it's up?
Five.
So that's, yeah, they had no idea it was going to be this big, nobody.
And it, from talking with different people between here and Defiance, it doesn't sound like the Board wants to negotiate. They're kind of set where they want to be, or where they feel they need to be. Denise is already speaking with all Blaze Village, Paulding County Fairgrounds, she's already speaking with places to move it to. We can't let that happen.
No, I agree.
It has to stay here, so.
They're taking the expense side, though, aren't they, the Fair Board?
Power building.
Yeah, expense side. So it seems kind of, they get 75%, 25, you know, a fair split would be 40, 60, or 50/50, I would think.
Assuming they wouldn't store all that stuff, somewhere in the Fairgrounds, too.
Well, people are going to have to put some pressure on.
People there would help a lot.
Yes. As many as, if we could just pack that EMA Building and let the Fair Board know that, hey, Hicksville's behind this, we don't want to lose it.
It's good for the county, it's good for the whole area.
It's good for everything.
Well, maybe the Commissioners could put a little pressure on.
Well, they have met with the Commissioners already, and, and there is a Commissioner here, if he would like to say anything on the subject.
Welcome, Mick.
Hello?
Let me put you on the spot, big boy.
I'll be at the meeting. I think, I think it would be good to go into Hicksville to have a pretty strong show. We don't want this thing to go to Paulding County. Why would we want those people to get the sales tax? I mean, obviously, as a Commissioner, we're worried about sales tax, and people come from all over the place, and they're hitting gas stations, McDonald's, or wherever else along the way, so it's important for our community. It's important for the county. I would hope to have come here tonight just to listen and not be a part of a governmental meeting where I have to make a decision.
Thank you.
Well, we're glad you're here.
You're welcome. Your chair's still up here?
A lot of snow that time, January the 9th, I got that written out, so probably an evening meeting, I'm guessing.
I'm thinking 6:30, but...
I don't know.
I'll try, I'll try to go.
I got a paper in my desk, but...
It's at the EMA Building in Brunnersburg.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Paper could put something in there.
I'll wait for Diane to give you her time.
Okay, I'll give it to you right after the meeting. Going on with my report, then, additional funds for the CIC. I was at a meeting a couple weeks ago where they were asking Hicksville for 16,000 instead of 15,000, and I did not remember to present that in the budget, but the City of Defiance is increasing their amount for like, by 5,000, and honestly, they have spent a lot of time in Hicksville on, with some of our businesses, and a lot of our projects, and a lot of our loans, and, you know, and I, I think it's well worth it to add $1,000 to the CIC payment in 2018, and I guess I would just ask you if you're okay with that? I mean, it's not anything we're doing tonight.
In the form of a motion?
Yeah, that would be great.
I would make that motion that we increase the CIC contribution from 15,000 to 16,000.
I'll second that.
I have noticed a big difference in the support we're getting from the CIC.
Wish we'd have known earlier, we could have put in the budget.
I know. When, next year, when Cheryl amends the budget, we always have to straighten out a little bit of something, she can change, but, roll call, please. Baker?
Yep.
Bassett?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
I guess while we're talking about 2018 budget already, the nuisance board has received bids on a house to tear down, and we didn't put any funds in the budget to tear down a nuisance house. And so, I would like to ask that you also include $10,000 in the budget to tear down a house on Smith Street.
Just for Smith Street?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
So, and then that would be assessed to the property taxes.
So...
And the 10's not set still? Could be less.
Right.
Thought you took bids.
Um, I thought we did too. But, I mean, that's...
No, nobody told me that part, so...
Yeah. I mean, that was just rounding enough to the nearest thousands, a thousand dollars, but, yeah.
I feel we should do it, we get it back to the taxes.
Right.
We want to clean up the town, so...
That's what you're gonna have to do.
So I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please. Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
I'll say yes, hoping that that can do two homes instead of just one.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
7:30 is the time of the meeting, Ron? Who's got this?
Did you hear that?
I did. I'm writing it right now.
All righty, you got to do that, because you're gonna make a bid.
Can we ask which house that is? Can I ask that?
Yeah, it could be Jonathan's.
That's not as big as the one we tore down, but...
Nice.
That's just a little long story.
Labor and Holland, unless it's killer, it's dumpster, we got away from that, it's good, otherwise. Burn, otherwise, it's been 17 years.
Yeah. So, anyway.
Um, there's, you know, that takes care of the agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council? Mr. Bodwell, did you want to address council?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. We'll have, there you go, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's a little baller.
Cheryl encouraged him to come to a water and sewer committee meeting first, but I don't think he wanted to do that.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jay, initial J, Winston Bodwell. I'm one of your newer residents here at 310 West Arthur Street. I bought the John and Madonna Kenner home on Arthur Street. I want to report to you that I've never felt more welcome than I have in Hicksville. And I want to thank you, everybody, every one of you, and now I'm putting a face to the people I voted for, because they're all in this room, and so it's a pleasure to be here. I just can't express enough that I've been super welcomed, and I love this place, and I came here to die, I'm dying. And my wife is 60 years old, I'm 77, and so she's gonna live on here for a while, I hope, longer than I do. And she also likes Hicksville. We moved to Ohio because she is going to be, going for her sixth college degree at the University of Cincinnati online. She is really Dr. Wendy Bodwell, but, and a former professor at the University of St. Francis. And now she's going into a totally new field at age 60, and going to become a nurse practitioner, psychiatric nurse practitioner. So, we moved to Hicksville, you see, because the out-of-state tuition in Fort Wayne was prohibitive. So, so instead of paying the out-of-state tuition, we moved here to become part of this community, and I want to be part of this community as if I'd lived here all my life. And frankly, you've made me that welcome, and I appreciate that. But I come tonight with a complaint, two complaints, very serious complaints. I live on social security, $1,362 a month, yet my sewage bill has been, for the five months I've been here, has, the least it's been is $99 a month, on top of the water. And that is unaffordable for a retiree. My wife works part-time in Fort Wayne and will pay income tax to the city on her income, but there's no income coming from me to the city. And it's just driving us batty. My last bill was $99 for sewer alone, and that's just totally unreasonable. Now, I know many of you, because I've talked individually with one of you, say, oh, it's the damn EPA. Well, it doesn't matter, we have to accept whatever they do. And so I'm pleading with you to get a new amortization schedule where it isn't killing people like me that are living on social security. There are five houses for sale within one block of my residence. People are fleeing Hicksville, and I'm sure you don't want that to happen. You want people moving in. And your sewage bill is unreasonable and unaffordable. It could be amortized on a different schedule to where it wouldn't hit us so hard. I understand you have to make expensive things. They're doing it in Fort Wayne, they're boring a huge hole in the ground in Fort Wayne. So it's not just Hicksville that's being hit, it's everybody in this area, and I understand that. But you see, I can't afford on $1,362 to make a $430 house payment out of my social security, and then on top of that, meet a $150 sewage and trash and water bill. It's just unaffordable. And so my wife and I have started to think that maybe we're going to move out of Hicksville if it doesn't change. I have ordered the water department this morning to put in a new meter, I've hired a plumber who came and said that we had no leaks anywhere in the house, I've installed low-flow toilets in the downstairs and the upstairs, we have no dishwasher, I spent $1,000 for a new washer dryer that are easy on water.
Well, I'll tell you what, Mr. Bodwell, I was given, when I got here tonight, your billing history and that kind of stuff, and maybe the administrator is aware of this or has anything to add, there's no one here from the water department, but...
I have one other complaint.
Okay.
Hear me out. And that's with the sidewalks. I drive this or walk with a walker when I can stand up, okay? You guys have gone around town and marked X's on sidewalks that are simply cracked. They don't affect a wheelchair or this electric wheelchair. But in the 300 block of Main Street, on the north side of the road, there's this much of a dip where the sidewalk has collapsed into the ground, and it's actually tossed me off of this. I also got tossed off on the south side, where it's not marked with an X, where the tree has raised the sidewalk this much.
Well, we are addressing sidewalks in town constantly, the zoning inspector has sent out notices. The reason why he placed those X's on the sidewalk is so the homeowners just know that in the future, you know, they need to watch that spot where it's just a crack, just the crack, so they can watch it and make sure it doesn't hump.
Yeah, but on the, on the opposite side of the street in the 300 block of High Street, where you marked X's and the sidewalk's been replaced, right across the street, the sidewalk has dropped vertically this much into the ground, and to go through it on this, but I was going through it on this, because on the other side of the street, unmarked, is a tree that's raised the sidewalk that much, and it'll kill my engine to even try to jump over that, so...
Well, we have sent out a lot of sidewalk notices, but we give them a reasonable period of time to get those repaired, and, you know, it's...
Well, five months I've been here, and five months I've gone up that sidewalk, and it hasn't changed.
Yeah. Well, those people have a certain amount of time to repair this. I'm sure you've seen other sidewalks repaired around town.
My neighbor had to replace a cracked sidewalk that I could drive over quite easily, but I can't drive over a hole in the ground or concrete that's sticking up this high. And please, don't take my voice, I'm very hard of hearing, so I talk very loud, and I apologize if it's too loud. I'm really, you know, just wanting to be as friendly as I can about my complaints, but, you know, something's got to be done about the sewer charges, they're unreasonable.
Mr. Bodwell, my name's Mike Barth, I'm the head of the sewer and water committee, and I have not talked to you before, and I just found out about your information tonight. And we've asked people to call, and call me or Ron and Sheila on that committee. You know, we've dealt with these situations over the years, with the burden, of course, of having the residents in town help pay for all this new infrastructure that we're building. And we're in a, finishing up phase one, going into phase two and three here the next couple of years. Things don't last forever, you know, and it takes a long time, and we didn't push to not fix them in a proper timely manner and over the course of years, but we're kind of in an impasse right now where we have to fix these things, to keep our water fresh, our waterways clean, and our treatment plant operating efficiently without overburdening it. And we've worked on that for many, many years, I know, I've been on it for seven years. And I know it's an impact on the residents with the water. I know you had a...
I've even shut off my water softener, so the water tastes like, well, I won't say what it tastes like. But I've shut off my water softener to try to, but no, no, the latest report this morning is, well, Mr. Bodwell, you used 8,000 gallons again last month, 8,000 gallons the month before, when there's only my wife and I, sir, it costs me $5 every time I flush a toilet.
Yeah, there's something going on with the system, and that's what bothers me about this whole thing. I mean, you should not be anywhere near 8,000 gallons. Not even close.
No.
My wife and I live here in Hicksville, and there's two of us, we use quite a bit of water, we're always running the washer and dryer, and we use 3,500 to 4,000 gallons of water a month.
Yeah, I mean, there's something wrong. The city utilities said, well, hire the plumber, so I spent $55 on the plumber to come, and he said, well, Mr. Bodwell, your water meter is shut off, it's showing no leaks, and then he went all through the house, checked the toilets, did everything.
Have you been given the dye strip?
Yes, and tried that, no leaks. I mean, it's just unreasonable.
Well, I'm sure that we're willing to try to see what else we can...
Thank you. That's all I could possibly ask for, but I wanted to come visit you anyway. Maybe the next time with no complaints.
You're always welcome, thank you for coming. We'll try to help you however we can, including our sidewalks, and...
Thank you.
We want a good shape for everybody.
Oh, by the way, the former, the former people that owned it, Madonna Kenner was your local artist, and painted a number of paintings and sold them in art galleries all over the state. And when we moved in, we bought her estate, and so we're donating for public showing to the library in their new building, over 60 of Madonna's paintings that are gonna be on, hopefully, a month's show. And then we're gonna donate some of those paintings to the land office and the historical society.
Wow, that's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, that is great.
Trying to be a good citizen of Hicksville.
Thanks for letting us know. I'd love to see your work.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address council about anything? All right.
Diane?
Yes.
I just wanted, just by listening to what was said tonight, the county will have the demolition program again next year, we have allocated the funds for that, so don't be afraid to come up with a property or two, and give them to us whenever that time comes.
Okay.
And I'm sure you'll get a notice.
Thank you for letting us know. Appreciate that.
Do you want to address this, ma'am?
No, go ahead, I didn't know if anybody wanted.
This is a good time while Larry's here.
Yeah, that's what I...
Because you are somewhat hooked up with Sherwood Mutual.
Oh, yeah.
They sent us all pictures of where you guys are coming up for your pedestals, right against our meter pits and stuff, making it near impossible to do repair work and stuff on them, of the ones that I've seen, on the jobs I've been to. The brick that I was on, on Mill Creek, last week, and the water department people were telling me the location of where your pedestal was set, and, which was right tight against the meter pit, and I said, well, tell them to change it. And of course, underground says, mm-mm, we're doing it by the print, that's the only way we're doing it. Is there any way we can work with?
I can get with Bill from Geotech and get with him on that, I will probably see him tomorrow. What is the amount of distance you would like it to be?
At least four feet.
Sometimes it might be in a spot where...
That's what Ron just showed you, Larry, this one is so tight with two driveways and the confluence of the way they come together.
And see...
They would have had to go behind that mound of dirt, and I don't know where they started boring from. They may not be able to get behind that further back, so some of it is, and to be fair, I think there's only about a half a dozen of these so far.
Right.
They've done pretty good, they really have.
I can give a bill, you know, I mean, within, you know how it goes, because it's such a...
Sure. But, I mean, basically, his stable, to me, and super polite, bunch of guys on that utility company, but he said, hey, we can't change nothing, we're doing it the way the print says.
And that's the truth, and you know what I hope on that.
Right. But we as, and I'm saying we as a community, have to protect our own utilities.
Right.
And when I, when I seen you here tonight, I thought, and knowing that I had this picture in my pocket, I thought this will be an opportune time, because you can get something done.
Yeah, I'll give it to you.
Appreciate it very much, Larry, thank you.
I think the biggest thing, Larry, is if we have a problem and we're that close to you, you're gonna have a problem too, so we don't, we don't want that.
Right, exactly.
Larry, I want to thank you for coming and keeping updated on what's, you know, going on in council.
All in all, I think that crew is one of my job.
They are, I agree.
How far along, about half done, or?
Uh, they're getting, I would say, the zone green done, pretty much, the bus side. I mean, they're a good crew, and if you really do have a problem, they'll go fix you up. I know I had a couple complaints, curious why we have none. You know, of course, you're gonna have a little bit of mess, but, you know, when it's all said and done, they're gonna see, put straw over.
Boring's the best way to go by far.
Oh, gosh, yes, but, you know, accidents happen, you know, but, I don't know.
For the mile of, miles of conduit they put in so far, and like, what, six little accidents? That's pretty, pretty good.
I know they had one of us, was a Frontier and locator cable.
I was in on that one too, from the, from the three ladies in the condo there, they all called me and wanted me to make it all better.
Well, I want to apologize to someone, because I got a call at home about it, and the number that was left to return the call did not go, it went to an Indiana person, and I, and somebody's lifelines weren't working and everything, and I, I could not return the call to the person, I couldn't catch the name, it was just a fuzzy connection, and so, I apologize to whoever it was. Council?
I would like to go into executive session for personnel.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please. Baker?
Yep.
Bassett?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Jones?
Should we be taken afterwards?
No.
We're all gone home, Pete.
Okay.